Call this Jackson County May eighteen twenty committee meeting to order. Throw call Mr. Manning.
Mr. Rich.
Present.
Mr. Venable.
Present.
Mrs. Gilbert. Mr. Sisk.
Present.
Chairman present.
We have our prayer from Mr. Porter and our pledge from Mr. Venable.
God our Father, we are humbled. We are humbled to be in your presence. We're humbled to ask for things from you. But we know that you can answer all the questions that we have and give us comfort. Give us peace. So right now, so many things are going on around us. The virus that has spread among us, the economy and all the problems that has been caused. We just, we turn these over to you. But we know that you have the wisdom and you have the will and you have a way to solve a problem for us. We just need to turn them over to you. So God, we, we do that. We turn them over to you. We, we offer this prayer in your name. We ask for your help. We ask for your guidance, especially these commissioners as they make decisions regarding this county, the employees of each county, the people of the county, their safety and their well-being. So God, we just pray for them as they make these decisions, that your hand will be on them and give them wisdom that they need. And we pray for those that have been directly affected by the virus, that have been, had the virus and have loved ones who've had the virus. We just pray for them. Pray for their recovery. For those that have been affected economically because of the shutdown and the distancing, we just pray for them also, God. We pray that you'll give them comfort and peace about where they are and help us to resolve these matters. We pray you'll watch over us and guide us. Be with us every day. In his, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next be, need to approve the agenda, but before we do, if you'll see on page one, number seven, I want to move into page two, number eight. We'll be striking number seven on the work session and moving it straight to number eight on the meeting next. Second page. And then also on the first page, we'll add a number seven. It'll be meeting time and schedule. All right, if you want to look at number, page two, number three, was informed we needed to wait till our next meeting. So number three will be stricken. And then number five, I just want to make a, fix this. At the end of it, it says sanitation and it should say counseling agent. And then on the second page, number nine, be executive session. And it'll be the litigation. All right, I understand motion to approve the minutes has changed.
Make the motion.
All seven.
Got motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have no awards, presentations, other comments. Ms. Strauss.
Um, I just want to say too, that I have the approval of the sheriff to say what I'm saying today and that I appreciate the pay we received while we were out during quarantine. This being said, the majority of our employees were on the front line throughout the entire quarantine. So any extra pay they received, they earned it. I completely understand the budget issues we've been facing for several years. I'm not unsympathetic to that or to the commission's plight with that. What I am unsympathetic to is treating and or making allowance for only certain county offices. Um, the sheriff's office has, has done and has always done what they've needed with minimal resources for a long time now. This pandemic and the way it has been handled by the commission has brought to light a whole new prejudice to our employees that just quite simply, the majority of us will not, cannot overlook it. Um, I don't stand here speaking for public works, maintenance, solid waste or transit. I speak only for our office. If I understand correctly, they have the same complaint and I do hope they make it. When we returned on May the first, a few of the offices in the courthouse were half-staffed, which tells me this was a decision that was made among certain elected officials before we ever returned to work that day. Revenue commissioner's office, private judges' office and the commission office employees were all working on an A and B every other day schedule. They worked five days out of ten, were paid for each and every day, which might I add, they took thirty hours work due to the closing for lunch and cleaning the hour and a half that we closed from ten thirty to twelve daily. For a total of eighty hours for thirty hours work. Now that's not thirty hours a week, that's thirty hours a pay period that was worked. But eighty hours was paid. I appreciate and respect the job that all of my coworkers from those offices do, but should this shoe be on the other foot, I would hope they would ask this question of you also. Um, even the elected officials were on the A and B schedule. Was Sheriff Phillips included in that? No, he wasn't. Sheriff's office employees were offered no such schedule nor any compensation for the off days afforded certain county employees. That simply is not fair. Should some type of reasonable compensation have been offered, I would not be standing here saying this. It's my understanding that once Sheriff Phillips broached the subject with Commissioner Guffey, a hundred dollar per pay period hazard pay was offered. That's ten dollars a day. Sheriff Phillips was hoping that he could sell this offer to his employees, but unfortunately, he was not. Which is why I'm here voicing my concerns, asking for answers that I hope you can provide. I do understand the reasoning of the half-staffed office, so if you could curb the closings should someone become ill, but in the commission office, an office I might add, y'all are behind a lock, keypad and doors. And you had nowhere, have nowhere near the foot traffic that we have. Um, I just don't feel, I feel like that the sheriff's office employees should have been compensated also. We are essential, yes, I do get that, which is why our employees have been here since day one. Many times answering the phone and dealing with questions, that seventy-five percent of the time, they were directed to other courthouse offices. And when you call here, I want to add that you get a real person on the phone. You do not get a recording. Sheriff is very adamant about that and I'm really glad about that because I feel like that's what our citizens of Jackson County deserve. My question to you is, please tell me why or how an employee from one of those offices on your A and B schedule is more valuable than a sheriff's office employee and not deserving of the same compensation?
I wanted to rest just a little bit what you said there. But um, it's all, a lot of the things that you talked about, it's all totally new to me. Um, I am commissioner. I knew nothing about a lot of this right here, compensation and things. So uh, I feel like that you had a legitimate question right there. Also as employees, if you're out there, you're putting yourself on the line and public works, it didn't matter where you say it, sanitation, I mean, they, they drove the trucks, they've done whatever task of them, but I didn't know none of this was going on.
Mr. Orley.
Well, part of this is going to be follow-up to what Ms. Rice just said. And I will first of all say that Mr. Guffey, fairness to you, you did come up with a couple of options. Uh, one was a hundred dollars every two weeks for our employees hazardous duty pay and or comp time, which we understand that has to be voted on by this body before that can be approved. There's some problems with comp time, I've wanted that minute. But one other thing to follow up to her, two comments got back to us and I don't know who they were associated with, but if you're in this room, shame on you. That the sheriff's office signed up for this job. They knew what they were getting when they signed into it. Shame on you if somebody in here said that. And shame on you if you said that, because we got off, we had to work, we got to work the full five days during the last close, that closed down when rest employees were working four, that this is fair because they didn't have, they had, they got off those days. It's just not right. Shame on whoever said it. Um, as far as comp time goes, of course you know we're understaffed. It's no secret. But we still, men are post every day. We do what has to be done for citizens of this county. Um, we understand the budget problems and I understand that's where the problem came. And again, we do appreciate the first six weeks of getting double pay. I, there may have been another way to get by that without paying that, I don't know. I'm not in charge of doing that. But we certainly appreciate that. But when other employees were getting to go home and still getting paid the same amount of money that our employees were doing, it's just not right. The comp time thing is, is all great and wonderful, but let me just give you some statistics. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, this is just five different employees. Total of two hundred and forty-four hours in two thousand nineteen. A total of two hundred and sixty-seven and a half hours in two thousand eighteen. For a total of five hundred and eleven and a half hours that were given back to the county because these five employees were not able to take their time off and they were already maxed out on time. The problem with comp time is, most of us can't take it. We don't have the manpower to say, we'll let three people off on one shift. Can't do it. It's just impossible. So it's a savings to the county of thirteen thousand dollars. Almost fourteen thousand dollars in those two years from those five employees. From them not taking their leave. Many, many, many times. And I know, we've had this conversation before. Many times our guys don't put in comp time when they work late because they know they don't have to take it. They can't get their annual leave in, they can't get their, their comp time they've already got saved up in. So comp time, although generous, is just not a real good option for us. So we would love to still get a little benefit monetarily rather than comp time for our employees. We just think that's fair and we just want to bring back y'all's pension. Again, I know y'all haven't had a meeting since this, I get it. With this thing going on, it's a new world for all of us. We're having to deal with it. But fair's fair and we just want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on.
Thanks, Rocky. Mr. Nash.
I appreciate your opportunity. First, let me say I learned a long time ago in Sunday school, you don't start casting stones because they might start applying back at you. So I'm not much of a stone caster. Because I could have plenty thrown in me. One thing I do want to thank you for is the compensation that you gave our people. What I want to do here today is speak from the heart. And I think if all you commissioners, as department head, would put yourself in my shoes and understand I'm speaking from the heart for my people. It's not a cast a stone deal. I get no compensation from this. It's extra, but I'm on contract with you folks and I appreciate that. But what's right is right. You gave us the, our folks at the jail, if they worked, they got paid for being at home and working. And I think that was morally the right thing to do because it was fair. But if some other county didn't do that, that doesn't make that county right and you wrong for doing what was morally right. We're just asking you gentlemen to, to look at it and be fair. You give us just enough people to make that jail work and I hope you're proud of it. You've got a fine organization over there and there's some great people there. They've done a Herculean task in this COVID nineteen situation. We have no symptoms, no virus in the jail. They have really gone above and beyond to do what was needed to keep that jail safe. Part of the, what we do is try to protect the liability of this county, doing what's right. Doing what's right, treating those inmates in a fair manner. It's uh, runs parallel with the constitution, their constitutional rights. And we're not going to violate those rights, but it's become a lot harder with this. Our people are there, we don't have extra people, as Rocky said. I can't let my people off for their comp time all the time because we don't have enough people to operate them in a safe manner. I'm just asking you to look upon this not as casting stones or as placing blame, just asking you to open up, put yourself in our shoes as managers of these people that have really been going above and beyond and do what's right, you know. And I understand we've got money problems. I've tried every way in the world and I think we'll see come year end to save money at the jail and make money in places that we weren't making money before. And that's due to these people that are there busting their fanny every day in this county. I appreciate your time, Joe.
Appreciate it, Nash. Vandy.
Hey guys, I feel like I'm going to be kicking a dead dog here. But you guys got to understand, you know, we're the front line. We go into these people's homes, we put ourselves in danger. Thank you for the time that you have paid us for. Uh, that was very generous, but make it fair. I mean, we're out there regardless. I mean, we can't cut our staff in half. That, that would pick up more burden on us. Um, take that in consideration. We've got families at home. Some of our families don't work due to childcare or whatever. Everything's a mess right now, but don't take away from us. You know, make it fair if you're going to give it to somebody, give it to, give it to the rest of us. We, we should be getting hazardous pay like a lot of other counties around here, but we're not. I mean, I, I have an eighty-one-year-old father that lives with me. Imagine if I was to take COVID nineteen on with me. Think about it. You know, we signed up for this job, yes, we sure did. But we don't want to be treated like stepchild. We want to be treated fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to, I know y'all got a few things to say. Let me put a little bit of context on exactly what happened to kind of get us up to where we're at. Now, Rocky, you was there. When it come about, the whole reason we was doing an A and B shift, did not have anything to do with, it was trying to better one department or not better a department. It was, we knew it was open courthouse and we were trying to keep it going as well as possible because you had all those people confined in there together. Didn't have them do the, the citizens as much because we got the dividers. But if you had one employee coming in, in the tag office, just for example, and, and somebody in their family had given them COVID nineteen, then we lost the whole tag office for at least fifteen days. Uh, that was the purpose behind it. Okay. Then I got to do a little investigating about the sheriff's department, about different entities because I'd been called. And I found out that all the counties, there was a reimbursement of fifty dollars per week for sheriff employees. So I got with Chuck and that's what I offered the sheriff. And I don't think he liked that. Or, like you said, the employees didn't like it. So when he told me that, that was good enough, that's when I said, well, I'd take it to a commission meeting and it'll be something that the commission has to go on. So that's kind of where we're at and why we got to that place. Uh, and like I said, the hazard pay that we offered was because it was reimbursable. And that's the reason why I called, got checked around Cherokee, DeKalb, different counties were doing that. Uh, we're in a place with our budget because of the fire at the park and because of COVID nineteen, we had about one point four million dollars in cash balance. Well, after those two entities, it emptied. We was done. So I ain't going to make that decision just to do things without this body voting on it. So that's the reason we're sitting here today and I, my intention is we'll discuss this. It's been on the agenda ever since me and Chuck had talked about it because it had to be discussed upon, among this body first. And to go back to, Mr. Sisk didn't know about it, every commissioner called me, he was on with you, Donald. So uh, if you had a call or come by, you'd, you'd hear about it.
Why didn't we not have a call, wait? Congress. I mean, that's, that's my responsibility.
Well, it was during a COVID nineteen that nobody had ever been a part of, so that's where we's at.
We should have all been together.
Mr. Rich.
I'm, I'm sure we'll go over and get, just as, treat everybody just as far as we can. I know this is uncharted water that we've been into and it's, don't look like it's going to get calmer anytime soon, but we're going to get together and, and promise you, I'll promise, we'll do everything we can to make everybody on an even scale. Where everything will be fairness to everybody. That's the only way I know to do it. Now, what that, what that will be, we'll just have to work it out and, and see what we can do. But I promise you, I'll do all I can to make everything even out. Thank you.
I don't know if I should speak or not. I learned a long time ago, I don't, I don't think so. I'm angry and, and with, you know, what's been put on us tonight is I'm as angry as I've been in a commission meeting. I mean, we've been up the back which to do all we can do for our employees and we've not even had the opportunity to try to even things up. And then, you know, we get talked about like we took away something from somebody and we have not. I mean, we, we're charged with trying to take care of the public and our employees and we're doing the best we can. We're here tonight and going to talk about what it takes to, to come as close as we can. It's impossible to make everything equal, but there's a difference in equal and fair, as a friend told me today. And we're going to do what we can do, but it's, it's very insulting that you guys come at us the way you come at us with the way, you know, that we've done all we can do for our employees. And Mr. Guffey said, it's tapped us. I mean, we're, we're, we're broke and, and we're doing all we can do and then for you guys to come at us the way you come at us. I, I don't know what else to say. That's all I can say.
Sisk.
It's like I said, I'm, I'm sorry it happened. I can't, I can't go back on anything. I don't call it insulting because y'all's out there protecting our lives and uh, and I appreciate what you've done. I feel like we could have had some call meetings. I mean, I, I was very, very hurt the things that went on right here. Because Madison County, they've been back at work for five weeks, public works and things. And I've seen so many things and uh, not pointing fingers at Jackson County or any public works employees, but uh, the potholes got larger and the problems got bigger. And uh, you know, I feel like we could have staggered some things out there and done a whole lot. And my, 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 my thoughts are for you, you know. I mean, I don't even know what to say, but, but uh, I appreciate you coming forward. And uh, I feel saddened and I'm not insulted, feel saddened because we didn't know. I didn't know what was taking place. I didn't know. And uh, to make things, to make things right, we, I feel like we had a call meeting. It didn't matter if it was over in the parking lot. And uh, Rocky or Chuck, Kim, whoever, other ones got out there and explained kind of what's going on. Don't let it keep pushing down the road. I mean, that's my thoughts.
Well, if I hadn't pushed down the road, it's just happened last week.
Well, I mean, uh, we've been shut down basically right here for two months, you know.
Anything else, anybody else need to speak, you didn't get a chance to? Good.
Mr. Guffey.
Yeah.
I spoke to a legislator who's not in our district, but he has assured me that any money you are out for ex, uh, extra expenses that you wouldn't have had if it hadn't been for this, will, you won't be made whole on that. I don't understand where.
The governor did have that control and she give it to the legislators. I'd be honest with you, I don't know how that's going to go. I don't think nobody does. You know, I just, just being honest, I, I don't know. We might, you know, and they, just like our extra security at the doors, we're hoping that we, we get at least eighty, it's supposed to be eighty-seven percent back. And I don't know if we will. We, we hope we do. I really don't know. This is something new to everybody. You know it is and I feel like we've just done the best we could do to try to control it the best we could have. Being the first time anybody had ever dealt with anything like this. But we will, I mean, we, we moved it to, and we will have further discussion on it and come up with a, with a plan. And uh, but I just need, I thought, I think that this body needs to do it, not just, just me on this.
All right, number one, discussion items. Replacement of courthouse AEDs. Mr. Smith, can you fill me in a little bit about that?
Our current AEDs here and at the jail, I think, how you got them?
Correct.
They are coming to end of life. You can buy new AEDs and we've, we've talked with folks at the fire association to go in on a group buy. These things for around a thousand dollars a piece or you can pay five hundred dollars to put a new battery in there and they will still be in their life any year. So um, we've talked with them to try to get into that group buy. They, if we're going to have AEDs here in the courthouse and at the jail, they need to be replaced. And I think it's probably good idea if we can get, you know, in group buy, that we look at purchasing those in the fire association.
Okay.
When does the shelf lock on new one?
It's my understanding that they're good for five to ten years. However, I realize that's a wide span there, but uh, it's the batteries that's the most costly thing for these open lines. They're five hundred dollars each for a battery. The AED itself's thirteen hundred dollars. So that's going to have the cost. The new AEDs use the CR one twenty-three batteries, uses a dozen of them. You purchase those at Walmart. So you have block house savings there with batteries. Five to ten is what I understand.
And how many have we got in the courthouse?
We have three on each floor and then two at the gym.
Okay. Good. If they got any more questions for Ms. Smith, I'd please. If not, we'll put them on the June, June fourth meeting, if that's known. Resolution, number two, be a resolution regarding pistol permits. Rocky, can you explain that? I mean, I just, you've probably been better prepared than I can.
Yes, so there was a letter that I think I drafted, behalf of sheriff, in support of the county's maintaining the pistol permits. There's been a, um, there's been a wave going through the state for the last several years where the state are trying to give it to the state, where they would collect any, any monies from it. Although we probably still have to do most of the work as far as background and things like that. And we're just trying to show each county's support, the sheriff's office keeping that instead of it being sent down to the LEA. LEA's not a big fan of doing it because they realize it's, uh, it would be very difficult for them to deal with their manpower. That each county actually knows their people better than they do in Montgomery. So if somebody in Jackson County has a problem and does need a pistol permit, who better than the local sheriff and his, and his employees to know that? So this letter just sort of is sent to the legislators to show support from each county commission for that staying in county.
And it is important, what, what are we use that for?
That's used for, well, purchasing cars, training, uh, you name it, whatever, whatever we really need for it. So it's something if we didn't have, we would have, we'd be riding horses again.
Right. Okay. Uh, we'll get, if everybody's good with that, we'll put that on the next meeting. Number three, the canary four twelve, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, chairman. I see this in, I don't own here, but I don't have a lot of information regarding.
You're going to be covering for a minute. If you are, if you look there in the mic at way we can.
Well, this is about what Scott's already requested.
This is the, the.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was taking it, taking it off you. And you're ready for that.
If we're going to move forward with it, we need to have a public hearing. So if that's what we want.
Y'all want to go ahead and set a date? While we're.
It can be the next meeting because you have to have a notice of public hearing. So sometime off later June.
We could do it on June sixteen. That's good, everybody.
June sixteen. It's on Tuesday.
No, it's Monday.
June fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I'm sorry, fifteenth.
June fifteenth, be Monday.
Okay. Number four, be restaurant contract to park.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, his, uh, his contract is up. It was up April fourth.
Yeah.
This year, we got a three-year contract and we just got to see what we're going to do with this contract. He didn't know what he pays now or.
Yeah, we want to talk about however you, you want to renew it. What would it last about three years?
I, I would say we just go ahead and renew it as it is now.
Yeah.
And then uh, because I'm spending twenty-four hundred dollars probably, probably next week. I'm on sewer again because down the road, they've got to be something done, that place down the road.
Correct.
So uh, I would say leave it like it is right now.
Is he satisfied with leaving it like it is?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Evans.
For another three years or?
Two years, the two years for two years.
Yeah, that would be five years, yeah.
It's two-year. That's probably what they have it with the sewer. Is it at the.
We're having it when it comes out of the, out of the back of the restaurant. His bathroom, his restaurant. So that's, we've got to dig up the concrete and everything. You know, that's more money that's got to be spent on that old building.
Right.
The building, the building's not that bad a thing, it's just, it's just a plumbing and the, you know, sewer and that stuff.
Right.
That's what we're going to change.
If he will have go for two more years, I, I, he's been a great tenant. I mean, what he's done, done. what he's done, done there during disaster and all, I mean, can't say enough about-
Yeah, he went above beyond, opened up on that one.
Yeah, he, he's filed with current contract for at least a couple more years.
Yeah, okay.
When you're, when you address it right there, it should be some ongoing thing, how often we have been twenty-four hundred?
Well, I'm hoping it's the last time I have to spend it. Now, we put sewer in, what was it, three years ago? About three years ago, we went and put the boat store in. And, but they just went to, they didn't go into the buildings with it, okay? And that's where you have a problem with the sewer. Instead of putting the, a round, a ninety in it, they just put a, weren't just go straight in, then it has to flow out. So you got to put a sweep in, so that's the problem. And, 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 you know, his, his business is picking up a little bit now, but, you know, he's had it rough here since the end of, what, January? Another hauler comes tomorrow. Another hauler.
All right, if everybody's good with it, we'll do the renewal for two years and we'll put it on the joint, June fourth meeting. Uh, number five, where you're up there, for always temporary employees apart?
Yeah, I, I sent y'all a paper. I'd like to hire Keegan's settlement or temporary for at least two to three months. We're, we're looking okay down there, as somebody said, but it's not up to the standards it needs to look. Okay? But if there's any way, I, I would like to see if y'all could put it on the voting tonight to see if I could get him started.
Good. All right, if, if there's any disagreement, we'll put it on tonight's meeting and we'll add it to number, number nine.
Nine was-
Yeah, I'll make my ten in executive session.
I'm just gonna be a six-month temporary, no sir. No sir, but at least, not more than two or three. If I can get by with two, fine, if it can't, I have to keep it three, but, but we're so far behind with stuff that, you know. I appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ford. Number six, gate at Buck's Pocket. Got the infamous Jimmy Jones here with us. The main thing is the, the gates are, we're almost ready to be put in?
The guy's building the gate, said the gates will be started tomorrow.
Okay.
And he should have it built by the end of the week.
Okay.
I reckon the agreement that we talked about, Paul was in the meeting, he was in the meeting, that once the gates are built, then road department will put them up where they need it to be.
Right.
They've already been marked and measured by DeKalb County and Jackson County side, so we know how big they are.
Okay.
We got the, the MOU from the state, just needs to be signed. As far as I, the way I understand it, it's already been signed by DeKalb County.
Okay.
We just need it signed by Jackson County so we can go forward with all this.
Okay. And it spell out in there who's responsible for closing it?
In the first part, it's the, it authorizes the park ranger, the park supervisor at Buck's Pocket to, to close the gates and, and determine when the gates need to be closed. Then it goes into the county sheriff, will have the authority to close the gate in the event of an emergency or of active public safety. Just gives the MOU says that the road will be closed, the county sheriff or their designated will close and off the gate in their respective counties after clearing the area. The gates are ensured that there's no vehicles or any other type of traffic in that area. And which, on the Jackson County side, would pretty, pretty much be the bridge. That would be about the only area. You know, DeKalb County side is more of a wider area that would have to be secured. But there's, I will be down there and I'll also have a, a park, another person working with me, too.
All right, anybody got any questions for Mr. Jones?
Who's paying for this? I mean, is this the park paying for it or what?
It was all given to him. Tell me some material, yeah, he, he was donating.
The gates were donated after the, the last grounding. An individual that owned a business in section, he offered to furnish the material and build the gates and the county's put them up.
And he didn't want his name out, right? Okay.
Have you got a plan worked out to ensure, I know, to make sure when you do shut the gates, that nobody will be trapped inside?
Yes, that's what this covers, that's what the MOU covers. The gates will be shut, if you come off the Jackson County side on four fifty-two, there's a turnaround. About, probably halfway down, the gate will be there, and then the other gate will be on the other side. Just, just past the entrance to look where the ATV trailer be. That way, when the gates are closed on the DeKalb County side, no vehicle traffic can go down the primitive road or the ATV trailer come around. So it'll be completely shut off.
Any more questions, Mr. Jones? Thank you, appreciate it. Number seven, be, is meeting time and schedule. During this time, we decided to move the meeting to three thirty and then doing it every other week. So be the first Monday of the month, be a work session, the third be a meeting. So once we get through this, we'll resume regular time.
Reposing only, I don't know if you give them in four weeks?
No, every two.
Every two, I'm, I'm gonna follow what you said there.
Sorry.
We're gonna have a work session and a meeting every other Monday night?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's fine, I mean, we can do it anyway, that's just my idea, so if y'all got any other ideas?
We're gonna have a, we have a meeting and then have a work session for the next week's meeting, is that, that intent?
Yeah, and then that way you'll have a week to go. Do you understand that?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Well, why, why is our purpose of change, I mean, why don't we know a little bit, cause director, Monday meetings?
And if y'all wanna do that, it's-
Well, then we have a lot of issues right here in front of us, I mean, my opinion. But we're not, we're not catching up on any of that, that's, that's the move now.
Let's just keep it as it is right there, we'll-
So I don't make. All right, we'll leave it at three thirty.
So sort of you're moving the date, the time to three, three days?
Same day. Yeah.
Every Monday except, what, Monday?
Yes. All right, next we'll be going into our meeting portion. There is no whole business, so we'll just have new business. Uh, number one, be a motion to approve extended Joshua Gass temporary position with the sanitation department for six months.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed. Number two, be a motion to approve a signed resolution regarding the speed limit on County Road three sixty-four.
I'll make that motion also.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Next be a motion to approve the federal and project agreement for resurfacing on County Road ninety.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Number five, be a motion to accept hiring committee's recommendation of Regina Nash for the vacant nutrition center manager position for council agent.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion to approve the contract estudium for the public works department.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Number seven, be a motion to declare the following surplus. If you look, we got Toyota Tundra, general dishwasher, mapping appraisal trailblazer, and maintenance two thousand and four Explorer.
How are these to be disposed of, I'm gonna do-
Go deal some.
I'll make the motion to do that.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Number eight, be the COVID nineteen hazard pay.
On this, uh, Mr. Sis could request an executive session to discuss something else. Could we have an executive session on number eight? And ask our department heads, HR and Mr. Ford to remain in executive session with some for purposes of litigation and good name and character in legal.
Would be a reason to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion that we do that. Second both items.
I'll second it.
Also, Chief Deputy would stay since Sheriff isn't here, we appreciate it.
And Mr. Nash?
And Mr. Nash, yeah, and Department head.
Okay, yeah, bye.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Sis, second?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All in favor say aye. All opposed. We're in executive session.
Yes, we're part of it, all of our kids.
Yeah. The park beheld to stay.